Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Excuse.
Councilmember Chris.
Here.
Councilmember Langenfelder.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley. Councilmember Wade. Councilmember Yocum.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'm assuming you see it push the button so that your microphone is green. I believe that helps with the video, right, and audio? Okay, thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Wade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Please note, uh, there's Councilmember Wade is here at nine thirty-one. Good morning.
All right.
There you go.
Lucky cheese.
Council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 384310383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item one, discussion regarding City of Kingman compensation plan. Human Resources staff will present an update of the City of Kingman Employee Compensation Plan to include recommendations for the fiscal year 1819 budget. Staff will be seeking counsel direction.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Jackie and her staff have put this presentation together and it's got a different emphasis, I think, than some of the ones in previous years. When you look at the first parts of it, it should be really with an eye towards those things that you see that would be important in the redesign of a compensation plan. And that will become obvious as we go through the presentation way that's true. So with that, here's Jackie and her team.
Greetings, thank you for being here today. With me is Krista Toshlog. She's our Human Resources Administrator and my right-hand person. And I also, we also have David Cabrera. David is with Employer Council, used to be formerly Mountain State's Employers Council. David is a certified compensation professional and he's been our sounding board throughout our presentation development and as well as best practices in gathering data in the public sector, which is somewhat different than gathering data in the private sector. So with that, we have a, we'll be tag teaming in the PowerPoint presentation today as we each had our different areas of expertise and different areas of what we pulled together for you today. Well, it's not working. All right, so our meeting, first of all, we want to say thank you. Over the last couple of years, you've been funding compression adjustments. We came to you and let you know that we had inequities and you were very cordial in listening and assisting us in funding some compression adjustments. That's done. Compression is not fixed, if you will, whatever compression means, but the funding for compression is complete. And so we thank you for your commitment to that. So today's meeting objectives is the status of our city's compensation plan. And then we'll look at the, you know, what is a pay structure? We'll look at results of the survey comparing our pay structures to market peers. We'll also look at what total compensation includes, not just pay, but areas of benefits. So we'll review that and, as Jim said, a lot of it will start out in general and then we'll drill down specific to the City of Kingman and survey results based on that. We'll also talk about the state of our compensation plan. We'll look at some funding options for our compensation plan and eventually we'll drill down into some recommendations for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. We'll look at next steps in our compensation plan. We also looked at elected officials' salary and benefits that are provided through the market peers. So we'll share that information with you as well and then we'll answer any questions that you might have. David will go over the elements of a compensation plan and then we'll drill down into the elements.
Good morning. Jackie just asked me to comment on the different elements of a compensation plan. And the thing is that when you consider how significant the expenditure is of compensation benefits, dollars are in any organization, it's worth considering, how do the elements line up so that they work together? And so I just wanted to kind of quickly walk through the different elements of a comp plan. So you start off with the philosophy, which is basically is, what is the basis on which you want to pay people? Are you guaranteeing pay? Is it some portion at risk? Do they have to earn it pay for performance? Is it, it's a kind of formula approach? Because once you've got a philosophy defined, then you have to balance that with your economic reality because the plan has to be economically viable over time and sustainable over time. Those two elements balance together then create the framework around which then you can make sure that all the other elements of the comp plan are aligned and working together. So for example, how you value jobs internally? What's the value of one job relative to another internally? How do you want to assess the external frame of reference? Which is how much is the market paying for comparable jobs? And how, you know, what decisions do you want to make relative to that level of pay in the marketplace? Do you want to match that? Do you, you know, do you want to lead the market? Do you want to lag the market or, you know, you can only afford to do so much? So there's decisions to be made relative to what the market is paying and how you assess that relative to your jobs internally. And then it's not just about the base pay portion. It's also about employee benefits, the other elements of value that make up total rewards. Sometimes organizations have certain challenges with the base pay part, but the employee benefits can be very generous or other elements that when you put a circle around it, make for a compelling exchange of value with employees. So once you have that framework in place, then you can take a look at the structure in terms of the salary ranges, how you administer pay. But you want to do so in a way that's consistent with both the philosophy and the budget part of it or the funding part of it. And then finally, there's the element of, you're spending a lot of money on comp and benefits. So you want employees to value that because you want them to feel that they are getting a compelling exchange of value in terms of what you expect them to contribute on the job relative to what they receive in exchange for that. There is an element of this also of communication with employees, helping them understand the different components, helping them to value those components. Next slide. So in terms of different options around the philosophy part, so there's different ways in which organizations approach this. So one, I mean, one way is kind of a one-size-fits-all. You have one criteria, everyone's paid on the same. Sometimes, though, that's not realistic for every single job within an organization. Sometimes you have to make exceptions because there might be jobs that are difficult to fill or you're having a hard time retaining those key skill sets. So sometimes organizations will create exceptions or carve out certain jobs and treat them in a different way, kind of outside your normal program simply because of maybe market economics. Or, for example, sometimes organizations will say, well, we need to, you know, have maybe a combination of some of these elements to make sure that the pieces work. So like we said, it's not just about compensation, base pay, but it's also about employee benefits and the other elements of total rewards. And then also the all-important element of funding. How does the economic, how do the economics work around your plan to create a pot of money, if you will, that then will be paid out? So some of the options in terms of the payout criteria is you can pay to market. You can decide, we want to position ourselves relative to the market at a certain place. So that's one option. Another option is more formula-based. Every year, an organization determines what can we actually afford? And based on that affordability, we pay out some percentage to all employees equally, like the peanut butter approach or, you know, but basically it's a formula that's keyed off of what you can afford on an annual basis. Some organizations, one advantage of the formula approach is that it is keyed off of what the organization can afford on a year-by-year basis. So it's not guaranteed. It floats from year to year based on what the organization can afford. Some organizations, they also pay in terms of time and position, which is basically, but now these are options that are more guaranteed. So time and position just means every year on a set schedule, a person progresses from one step to the next or automatically gets an increase of some kind based strictly on tenure. Then there's also pay for performance. Sometimes it's called pay for performance or merit increases, but those are basically at risk. The employee has to basically earn it each year. Now, one of the things about pay for performance or a merit-based scheme is that it does annuitize. Whatever increases you give in a given year, it gets baked into base salary thereafter. So it becomes an annuity that's paid out into the future. Some organizations also say, well, we're going to pay based on the cost of living index, some kind of cost of living differential and we'll just pay based on that. But again, that also becomes a fixed component. And then the other thing is sometimes for different categories of jobs within the job family within an organization, you might have a different basis of pay depending on what's appropriate.
So the Kingman's current compensation philosophy, I know you've seen this before. I'm just showing this to you today for circling back to a frame of reference because we'll come back to this frame of reference later in the state of our current compensation plan. But basically, our philosophy explains why employee, the why behind compensation and where we position ourselves in the market. And with that, the, it talks about the purpose, the job design, internal comparisons, external market competitiveness, which we state that's important that we have our external market competitiveness. Blah, I'm not saying that very well. As, that we will position ourselves well against the external market. In terms of salary ranges, this is where we keep bringing back to the 50th percentile because this is the current adopted philosophy. But again, we'll reference back to that later on. So the different components, this slide is just showing you the different components that are needed, that are included in the funding, the budget funding for the total compensation plan. And as you can see, it isn't just about comp, it also includes benefits. So this is, again, just the element of the budget that includes the total comp. External evaluation, David covered that. This slide just talks about how an organization will position themselves in the external marketplace. So X percent of the jobs then are balanced and benchmarks against the external market. Then after you gather that data, then we do an internal evaluation. We use compensable factors such as experience, competencies, accountability, autonomy, and that kind of thing to align the remainder of our jobs in the compensation plan. And then we have the purpose of a pay structure. This is when we start to build the pay structure. Once we've gathered the external market and then align our internal, the rest of the jobs internally, then we need to decide on a pay structure. And this is where our compensation philosophy helps to determine what that pay structure is going to look like. And the main point here I want to point out is that what a pay structure does and why you need to have a pay structure is best practices to have one. And it quantifies, it helps you quantify the compensation costs. And it also enables you to determine budget decisions as well. So the elements of a pay structure includes pay grades, pay ranges. Pay ranges determine your upper and lower boundary of what you're going to pay for jobs. To build that structure, we need to find the market midpoint. And this is where David will describe a little bit more about that.
So basically, the approach that they took was to survey other peer or other cities that represent your peer group that are comparable in surveying different jobs and looking at the salary ranges associated with those jobs. And then taking the midpoint of the salary range for each of those different cities, lining up those midpoints, there's 16 of them, for example, for the chief here, and then ranking them from high to low. And then using percentiles, so basically the difference between the average and the percentile is an average takes the sum of all those 16 midpoints and divides it by the number of, by 16. But the problem with averages is that it takes into account the extreme values at the bottom and at the top. The percentile is a better way to go because, like, for example, 50th percentile of those 16 values is simply the average of the eighth and ninth value coming in. You take the average and it's most representative of the middle without being unduly influenced by the extremes. So in this case, this particular case for the, for the chief, 130, 130,000 represents the 5th percentile, that middle value of those 16 midpoints of salary ranges associated with the chief for peer cities that were surveyed.
So the market midpoint is the backbone of your pay plan. It's how you line up those jobs in your organization against the external market. Now where, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to pay at the 50th percentile. That goes back to your compensation philosophy of where you're going to be and position yourself, whether you're going to lead, match, or lag the market. But truly, the midpoint, when we reference the midpoint, that is truly, that's that spine of our compensation plan. Once we determine that, then we can build the pay grades. There's no fixed system on how to build pay grades. Basically, once you have that midpoint, you can start developing the pay grades. And then, the next slide real quick, I'm trying to get you to the point where we get to talking about Kingman here. But how jobs are placed in the pay grade, again, we do the external and internal market valuation. And this is just an example of some of our pay grades and where classifications are placed. Some of those were benchmark classifications that kind of determined where we were in the market and built that backbone and then the rest of them were placed using that internal valuation system. So pay grades, pay grade ranges, again, there's no hard, fast rule to do this, but generally speaking, pay grade ranges are, have a width of about 30 to 40 percent. And sometimes when you get higher up in the organization, the width is spread to more than 40 percent. And that's primarily because at the entry level of the jobs, reaching job competency happens quicker. And so in the higher you go into the organization, reaching job competency is assumed to take a little bit longer. So you have a higher spread. So how does, how does a pay grade range work? Well, you have your minimum, midpoint, and maximum in a pay grade. The minimum is usually the lowest pay level in your pay range for a job, but still at a point where you can still attract talent to your organization. Generally speaking, this is where you would place employees with little to no experience. Then on the far right, you have the maximum. That's the maximum value or maximum amount you'll pay for any one job. Generally speaking, this is where you have your top performers. Your midpoint is, again, that's your backbone. This is a place, generally speaking, where you have your solid performers, people who are competent in the work that they're doing for you. And so employees progress through pay ranges horizontally from minimum to maximum or from midpoint to maximum. And this is done in a variety of ways. As David described, it can be done through step increases. It can be done through merit programs. It could be through different points in a range where you say, once you attain this educational level or these skill sets, then you advance to the next step. But that's how employees progress through a pay range. Then there's pay grade progression and that's the vertical progression that can happen within your salary structure. And I just put together some slides on, to show you how sometimes that will work. In a job family, when employees achieve advanced skills or certifications, for an example here in our wastewater treatment, they can start out as a wastewater treatment one certification at a salary grade of 208. And once they receive their wastewater treatment two, then they can advance to the 209 pay grade. So this is one way of vertical compression in the same job family. Employees can progress up through the salary structure by advancing through different job families. A person can start out as an administrative secretary at a salary grade 204. We have an opening for a dispatcher. They can advance up to a dispatch level at a salary grade 209. And they like law enforcement so much through their dispatching career, they want to become a police officer. Then they could advance up to salary grade 212 and become a police officer and start that job class series, which is the next slide. We actually have some career ladder series in our organization and police and fire are two of the most prominent ones that we have. And as you can see, as they attain experience and we have openings, a person can progress vertically through the job families as well. We recognize that pay is not the only component of a total compensation plan. There are a lot of components that develop that total rewards package for employees and so we'll go through what that looks like.
So total compensation is not, as we've described, not just the salary. So we know that a good compensation strategy includes a balance between the internal and external equity and the competitiveness from the other market peers. Compensation and benefits affect the productivity and happiness of employees as well as the ability of our organization to effectively realize its objectives. It's to your advantage to ensure that your employees are creatively compensated and knowledgeable of their benefits. The elements that we have to consider when we think of that total reward or total compensation package include monetary, that in addition to base pay, you could have shift differentials or specialty pay as well as bonuses because we do offer, or somebody did expectations in some regard. Also, you have those legal requirements that we have to take in consideration to the total rewards and then also pay for not, time for not work, which we have a general holiday schedule. We also have retirement systems, we have our group health plan as well as a lot of. Which here on this slide, I think it's really interesting that we have a lot of range. So when you look at a decision, when I'm recruiting for instance, we have a salary, the post is going to pay 35,000. So that will attract or not our candidate, if it's not in with their expertise. But what they're going to look at secondly is going to be what other rewards does that employer offer? So we're competitive with the other cities and we'll get into what the other benefits for the cities that we've benchmarked. Yes.
Do you have examples of non-compensation?
Absolutely. For instance, we have flexible schedules. So if I want to work a 410 schedule and my department allows that, that's a real benefit to me because, you know, that way I only have to commute four days a week or I have childcare or things like that. Growth opportunities, education tuition reimbursement programs. We have, if some people will, they want that ability to grow. And then that could be through the leadership or the mentorship of a department or I sort of have accountant, but I want to become the financial services director and I have that ability to grow within my job. That is appealing to me, they want that ability to grow within. Working law, I think when we do exit interviews, the number one thing is they love their peers. They love their working environment. Those are, when we talk about being an employer of choice, that's what we tout. And I can show you some slides on recruitment, it's not in this presentation, but about that, we tout the community service, you know, all the different things that we offer as a city, that family type. So on the wheel, it says relationship with people. Those would be, again, coworkers, supervisors, work environments. Rewards and recognition, we do like a five-year service award, 10 years, things like that. So we do offer those.
Yeah, I was going to say, in addition to what Krista just mentioned, some other things that go into that are the work, in terms of work environment, is what's the technology like?
Yeah, resources.
And it's easily transferred from your work to your personal preferences on technology? Is the workspace that you're in up to date? Or are you sharing your workspace with storage for something? Those kinds of non-compensation plan items actually matter a lot to employees. Krista talked about mentorship as a way, accessibility to career development resources, training programs, attending conferences, those kinds of matter as well. Saw the slide about how much the compensation plan is. Often don't see those things added in, but they're very much part of it.
Yeah, the tuition reimbursement does not even, that's part of it, but the actual training opportunities. And I am able to attend conferences for my HR profession and I receive continuing education credits. And I know some of you guys understand that, like probably the legal profession, but not. And that's invaluable to me. And then I'm also able to then share that to the community through education and stuff too. Again, that makes me proud to work for the City of Kingman and then, you know, pass that on to other communities.
Krista, may I ask you a question along those lines? I made a note, this was regarding the salary grade progression that we discussed earlier. And so my question was, who is paying for this certification in continuing education? And is that not part of benefits? I mean, sometimes the city's paying for this, correct? For the continuing education or is it reimbursement?
Yeah, sometimes, yeah. Sometimes and sometimes it's a requirement of their job. So they actually are required to maintain those. And sometimes you get ancillary continuing education benefits by going to different conferences that help you maintain those certifications. For example, we both hold certifications and we pay, we paid for those certifications. But yet, through the city, going to conferences, we were able to maintain those certifications and CEUs. But when we recertify, we pay for that out of our pockets.
We have to pay our own way. But like in the wastewater example, when they got the next grade, oftentimes we will pay for some of their classes. And it depends on their, whether or not they actually have it set.
Okay, so there's nothing set?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
On the pay steps, do we reflect on the monetary value contributed by the city on each component of like a, all of these things? For instance, the value provided on healthcare benefits that the city contributes?
They receive that on their W-2 at the end of the calendar year in terms of health insurance. But, but we have developed a, based on our conversation last year, we've developed an employee value statement.
Sort of like an annual statement of total value received on each component?
We haven't used it yet, but we just recently developed that. And this last year is one of the things that we were working on. And so we actually, here's an example of one of them.
Yeah, so this is an example of a total rewards without the actual dollars behind it. But when I did the calculation for a police officer, you can see that over 50%, 51% is salary. But look at all the other, the other benefits, 43%. They have such a high retirement cost of.
I think that's really important. I like, I like the way that looks.
Yeah, and then the paid time off, I separated that just a little bit because I thought that was important.
And these are things we can hand out in open enrollment.
Yes.
Would it be your intent to provide these to individuals based on their specific salary?
Here's a little bit.
That'd be good.
So here's an example of equipment operator for the sanitation department. Oh, it's bigger.
So yeah, it'd be specific, Councilmember Chris, because some people participate in a high deductible health plan has a different value than.
Exactly. But each employee will get one.
Yes.
Based on their salary.
I don't know, can you read that side a little bit?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It's not in, it's not in the.
Oh, it isn't?
No, I just did these for backup and I, and I'm really glad to show it because we are going to be able to produce this.
That's great.
And then you can see, so for instance, again, this employee earns on a base of 37,000 and that includes some certification pay. But then if you look at his total rewards, it was 67,000.
I think that's important when you, when you compare your job and the services you're providing to the city to similar services that are being provided in the area by other agencies, you know?
Correct. And I think, I think when we get wrapped up in the city, what does Havasu doing? What is Spolehead doing? You know, that's similar because we all have same benefit packages like that. But when it comes, or most very similar benefit packages. But when it comes to what does the hospital pay? What does the county pay? Because they're a little bit different. We recognize that. But again, it's really hard to get the benchmark data because they're not going to tell me what their range are because it's all dependent on their experience and all that.
And yeah, we found with the, like the industrial park, a lot of those folks there do not know because they're dotted line, they have a corporate somewhere else. And they really don't know the, the information that we need to be able to do a true comparison. So yeah, so pretty much so we can, we can benchmark these against Havasu, Spolehead, the other public sector employers, but it's very difficult to do so with the private sector employers.
Don't want to dwell on this a lot, going to talk about next item. But the, Krista put up the total compensation. Police and fire pension are more than 10%. Not a small amount. Those are why it's important. Sorry, Krista, slowing you up here.
So as we said, it's not all about the pay or is it? And again, my comment was that, you know, when a candidate's looking to join your team, they do look at the salary. I mean, that's what's attractive, right? But then we also have that touting and that's what we're doing on our recruitment efforts is we're pushing that total rewards concept. We're advertising that you can be a part of great organization and, again, the leadership and the mentorship and all those things. But we do have a lot of different on the, what's important to me, whether it's workplace flexibility or if it's my continuing education. There's a lot of difference in the generational folks out there. So you have the, and I don't want to do the millennials of this, but you have the millennials that haven't really figured out the retirement that we offer. All they're looking at is, hey, I'm only going to get 15 bucks an hour. I can go make that over here. So for recruitment, it's that total rewards. So for recruitment, it's that total rewards, it is important, and we know it is, but they don't necessarily have that same value. Then you have a senior person, and we have a lot of educated, and not educated, a lot of experienced folks in our community, and they want to get paid more, because they've got that experience, so they don't want to come into entry. So those are all those components that what's valuable, and they definitely want our retirement. We hear that time and time again, I'll come to work for you, I know you've got great benefits. So they're willing to maybe sacrifice a little bit on that, but they don't want to work entry level, so we have that as well. So now we're going to move into actually.
Real quick question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Does the city and not, City of Kingman and the thousand?
Could we do an analysis? I know that City of Kingman does, we have a maximum.
Yeah, and we'll go through that, but I didn't break it down by Bullhead and Havasu, but I do know that they have those. I have a spreadsheet, and it's huge. It has all the data on it. I can, I can definitely look that up real quick right now, if you want, or I can share that information with you later, but we did, we did benchmark that, yeah.
The important thing to know about the city is that, is it a budgeted amount? And so we have a list of people that want to join it, and so we were moving people through their degree programs, if it was a degree program or the other. It's not an unlimited amount, we can't, you know, we have that limited button. So each year Jackie meets with the manager, and they kind of go through what, what we know that our needs are, especially for special program. Because if we've got these up and comers that need that degree, or they need that next experience, it's important for us to grow with, with it, and to be able to have that tuition.
And we do have four people right now that are going through the tuition reimbursement program, and we've had several people over the years go through the tuition reimbursement program. It doesn't pay for the hundred percent of the tuition, employee has skin in the game as well, if you will, but it does encourage that, and is also a component that we do tout when we're recruiting as well. So Kingman's pay structure, just some chief characteristics, again, it goes with the general. Now we're getting into the more specifics, before we were talking in generalities. But our pay structure is pretty much exactly as I described earlier. We have job classifications, we benchmark against the external market, we have minimum, maximum, midpoint values. Our pay grades are pretty much in line with, as I described, thirty-four percent to forty-one percent. For salary grades two oh one through two sixteen, those are our non-exempt classifications. You also find our entry-level police, fire, our sergeants and captains over in the police department in this range. These employees are placed on step. And then salary grades two seventeen to two twenty-seven are exempt level professional classifications. There's greater flexibility in their salary grade, those are actually on, on a broad range, so they can be placed anywhere in the range. Again, the pay structure, we do have governance in our pay structure, so when an employee, our department is offering an employee position, where they're offering an employee a salary above the entry level up to the midpoint, it does require prior city manager approval. So there's some governance there. We have another level of governance, when a department is offering an employee or a candidate midpoint to maximum, that does go through a compensation committee review. The compensation committee is comprised of department directors, so they, we can look at internal equity when we're hiring that far into the range, and ultimately does require the city manager's approval after the committee review. At times, our higher-end salaries for new hires is above the entry level, for the most part, what we're experiencing is due to staffing shortages and increased workloads, people are needing experienced candidates right away, and I'll just give you an example, my department, I am the most senior tenured person in my department, twenty-three years as of yesterday. And, thank you. And so my next senior person in my department right now is Krista, and she's not quite three years. So when I'm hiring, I'm needing to hire that experience. I'm trying to bring in that experience level, so a lot of my employees are above the entry into the salary range. I do have somebody at the lower end of the salary range, this is someone who came in with supervisor experience, but not necessarily HR experience, and we're trying to grow that person in, in the field, so. Other times, other things that are happening is, as Krista mentioned earlier, we have an aging demographic in our community, and again, those folks are experienced, and they're asking for a higher than entry level salary oftentimes. And then our unemployed, a low unemployment rate, not only in our, in our region, but also in the country, is also another competitive factor in hiring. And I know you've seen this before, but this is our salary grade, again, as I, our salary structured, again, you can see at the upper level, they're open ranges. The green indicates the salary midpoint for those different ranges. And then as you can see, from two oh one to two sixteen, those are step structures. So where are our employees on these step structures? So I broke them out, because they have different range midpoints, so the arrow's pointing to the midpoint of that, of those ranges. We have fifty-eight percent of our employees that are below that midpoint, and at the top, you can see like zero to two, zero to four, to zero to ten. That's the years or time in grade, time in that position for our employees, and as you can see, it's all across the board. This is kind of showing that our internal progression, the horizontal progression, is significantly slower than the external value out in the marketplace. So when we're hiring someone, and you can see, we'll look at salary grade two oh one to two oh five, when we're hiring folks, you can see we have folks at the midpoint with zero, we just hired that person. No years, and yet they're sitting there with somebody who has ten years of experience in their current position. Look at step five, we have somebody we just recently hired a year ago, and we have somebody with twenty years of experience also there. This is showing that our internal employees are not progressing horizontally through their, their pay ranges. Our starting salary is.
I'm sorry, Jackie, just a quick question. These four charts, is that, does that represent a hundred percent of our city employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, three hundred and twenty-eight as of the day this slide was built.
Except for three people.
Except for three. Are you one?
Yes.
Yeah, and the city magistrate and the city attorney are not on the salary schedule, because they're your direct hires, and whatever they can negotiate with you is what they get. So new hires' salary, again, this, this charges shows you, this is just the calendar year two thousand and seventeen, so the twelve months of two thousand and seventeen. In non-exempt civilian classification, I broke out police and fire separately. Sixty-six percent of the time, we were successful in hiring at the entry level. Thirty-four percent of the time, last calendar year, we were hiring above the midpoint, or above the entry level. For exempt level classifications, that's at professional level, very seldom are we hiring at entry. Eighty percent of the time, we're hiring above entry. For police, a hundred percent of the time last year, usually that's our non-certified, we hired all non-certified officers last year, so they start out at entry. And then upon completion of the academy, we move them to step two, and then they sit there until they progress through the pay range. Police or fire, excuse me, the sixty percent entry, those are our entry level firefighters. But as you can see, on fire, we have hired some battalion chiefs this last year, and forty percent of them, and all of that represents our exempt level, that forty percent is all the battalion chiefs that we hired, we hired above entry level. Again, pay range progression, I won't digress on this, but the highlights here, I just want to share with you, is there truly is no automatic COLA increases, there's no automatic employee, everybody gets a step increase. That is a decision that council makes each year during the budgeting process. We do have some exceptions during the, the year that we have to address, and that's where, as I shared with you, the wastewater treatment, as they obtain those next level certifications, they do automatically move to that next pay grade. Police department, again, when we hire those non-certified officers, soon as they become certified, they do advance to step two, but that's where they sit, until we do progress them through the pay range. And then because our employees have not been moving through the pay range, there's times when we do have some of these hires, where they're hired above entry level, where we have to come to the manager, because now we have a pay inequity, and it might be a Title VII pay inequity, where it's a adverse impact on a, you know, a protected characteristic. So we have to go to the city manager and try to make some of those adjustments in the pay, the pay range. So we do move folks with those types of exceptions.
And it's not a pay range, but we've also had to address minimum wage increases.
Correct. So in the last five years, we went over this in detail last year, so I'm just going to share with you the last five years. In two thousand and thirteen, we did lump sum bonuses, we did not progress employees through the pay range. We did that also in two thousand and twelve as well. Two thousand and fourteen, we did just a cost of living adjustment, again, that when we do a cost of living adjustment, that just, that gives everybody two and a half percent. That's the peanut burger approach. But it doesn't progress employees through the pay range. In two thousand and fifteen, we did a cost of living adjustment, and that's the first year we started addressing compression, where we're trying to move employees through the pay range. Again, you know, we didn't have a lot of funding, so we were careful about how we did that. And so we did that all the way through last year.
Quickly, Jackie, did the benefits package change at all in those five years?
Yes, the health insurance package continued, we've been having to continue to make plan design changes with that, that's the most prominent one, where we're shifting costs to employees. This year, again, we will be shifting costs to employees, we made some plan design changes, as well as increases to their out-of-pocket costs for premiums. As you know, the retirement system has gone up, both in state retirement system and public safety retirement system over those years as well.
Is that reflected anywhere in your report?
No, not today's report, but it will be in the budget report.
That is significant, isn't it?
Jim will be talking to you, that is significant, yes.
Real quick, I just wanted to provide you all with a little bit of information about our last couple of years of recruitment activities, and the fact that we are having to hire from outside of the area on some of the exempt level jobs, hired from Williams, Bullhead, Tucson, Yuma, Fort Mojave, Prescott Valley, though it's not, you know, Arizona, when I put on here Arizona, we're getting those exempt people from outside of this general area. We've had a couple folks turn down job offers with the City of Kingman, and that's a new trend, because typically, had not had that, the economy is slow, or poor, typically don't have a lot of people turning you down, and we've had people not accept interviews after they've applied, because they've found another job. But then we've also had, back in fiscal sixteen, we had an accountant and electrician both turn us down for pay. We were not successful in getting the accountant filled in that, at that level, but we ended up having to reclassify the electrician to electrician two, and we ultimately did steal the guy from the state.
So we did, we paid him at.
But we had to pay him.
We paid him at maximum value.
At the new classification.
So what I, so what I'm hearing you saying is that it's getting more competitive to get good employees?
It is, it is, and especially, I think, what we were pointing out, the entry level, again, they're not as sold on the benefits, even though we know, we recognize the importance of it, but the more tenured folks out there, whether they're in exempt class, or if they're, even if they're not, they are recognizing the benefits.
If you're able to bring in people from all over the state, what is the reason for not being able to get experienced police officers to fill the positions that we had open?
We already recognize, though, that we have the same public safety retirement system as those other organizations within the state, so that's the same, that we're paying less.
So it's just that we're not paying enough to recruit from other cities?
No, no.
That's one part.
Because that's the one that seems to be sticking out the most, is that you had a hundred percent on that slide, whereas fire was sixty percent.
That's a little bit confusing, because on the, on the, on the exempt level, the forty percent that we hired, those were internal promotions that we could not fill internally, that we had to go external, and therefore, that's why it's in that number. So the battalion chief that we had to fill for the training and safety, he was from the state.
So they came from elsewhere.
Chicago, yeah.
We're going to talk about this a little more on Tuesday, when we do public safety pensions, but up until very recently, like within the last year, when the City of Kingman hired a police officer or a firefighter from another jurisdiction, they brought that liability of pension with them. And depending on who you're hiring, that can be a really big number.
Okay.
And so, as a matter of policy, the City of Kingman has tried to hire people without experience, train them, so that all the.
I got you.
That makes sense, right?
Entry level wage for the police officer is, put them through the academy at the city's expense, we train them, they have, they don't have to have a college degree, they don't have to have any of that experience, they come to us, and then we train them. Then once they are certified officers, they move to step two.
And so it's the strategy, it's intentional.
It's an intentional strategy.
That's different, okay.
Well, there's another component to that, as, as our police officers are not moving through the pay range, they're stacking up at step two. So we have experienced officers that are off FTO, that are three years, four years worth of experience, sitting at step two, and for us to hire an officer from another area or agency, above those officers would be a complete pay inequity in our police department, and we would not advocate for that. So that's another component of a stra, of a struggle, a conflict that we have in there.
How do you move them from step two? How do you encourage them?
Funding the pay plan?
Okay.
It's just, it's just a budget.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I think, the point that we were trying to emphasize, is that you don't automatically move steps, just because you've been here another year. So we just sit there at step two, or wherever you were hired, you sit there until there's another funding mechanism, and that's just the way it is. But when we try to hire a lateral, like what Jackie was mentioning, we're either going to try to bring them above somebody, that doesn't work out.
No.
Okay, so that's, that's it on the recruitment trends, I just wanted to kind of, to give you a little of information, that we are attracting plenty of local folks, for the non-exempt folks, for the non-exempt positions. Total compensation, we really talked about this, I think basically includes your group health, high deductible, FSAs, like it's got all those different, all those different components. We also have specialty date, specialty pay. Okay? Let's see, here, on the employee opinion survey, you know, we did do that, and I want to show you on this slide briefly, I don't, this one was updated, okay. We did have a very high return rate, I shared this with you guys, or whoever was here a few years ago. It does show that on the compensation, we're definitely lacking as far as what the perceived expectations are, that we're not meeting compensation, but we're far exceeding, on the other hand, we're far exceeding, or very satisfied in the benefit satisfaction and the outlook. People will recommend their friends and family to work here.
Would you have expected folks to say that they're paid for their job? It would seem to me that probably most people would feel that.
But people said they were satisfied, if you look at the outlook, and you look at the satisfaction, they didn't fib on that, so again.
But that's not Councilmember Cress's question.
No, what do you expect?
This goes, this goes to the first box under compensation. And no, I wouldn't expect them to give us that number, and a lot of it comes from our own explanation of the pay plan. But we're, we're talking about the ability to move horizontally, as Jackie just said, and that hasn't happened. Saw the chart about how that hasn't happened. And then we've talked about the ability to move that whole matrix up based on the market, and that, that's happened rarely. And so, so that, in my opinion, should lead one to expect this kind of a result, that a high percentage of the people.
No, I totally agree. The other part of that is, when we have a, those new hires that we've brought in, we do not communicate that they're going to get a raise after their introductory period. That used to be the way a lot of cities and counties and organizations used to do, you have an introductory raise, you have an annual increase. We don't tell them that they're getting one, we don't, we're silent on it, we don't communicate, because again, it's all based on the philosophy and what we're going to do each fiscal year. And so that's where, again, you'll see those new people going, do I get a raise, or I get a raise, and so you get those survey results.
Kind of build off Councilmember Cress's comment, looking at compensation. You know, I think all the data shows that, that dollars are a primary motivator of work, but they're not the greatest motivator of work out there.
They're not the only.
And this city, or any city really, I don't think that any city could really afford to pay all of their employees what we believe that they're all worth, you know what I mean? That would probably bankrupt any city. So I'm a big fan of total compensation, and I always communicate that. Private sector, you don't get paid what you're worth either, you get paid what you can negotiate, right? But we want, I think, we want to make sure compensation, as far as dollars as a trading tool, are fair in the region, but we need to focus on the other things too. The non-monetary stuff, making sure that they have the modern computers, modern workspaces, training opportunities, all the benefits that we lead in the area on, are important.
And they understand what the value of all of that is.
Yeah, that all goes into. Yeah, that all goes into satisfaction, compensation, being able to take care of your family.
I'm curious about this one question under outlook. I mean, I'm reading that to say of the people that returned their survey, 41% attitude is negative. I mean, what, what was that question? And that's a disturbing number to me. What, do you know what the question was that they would answer that? Is your, is your attitude positive?
Yeah, I believe it was, what, how do you perceive the attitude of your employees? Like, what is the morale? I think that was the question.
Wow, okay.
One of my concerns is that with the STEP program, is that the program is out there and the employees know it's there. And then if it doesn't get approved that year that they make a step up, that has to be very hard on employee morale because everybody's waiting and they know it's there and there's a chart and they can see it and they know what every step is worth. And I think you can look and see, well, I've been here this many years, I should be at this step and I'm not. And I, that is one of my biggest concerns. I hope that we can address making things better for the employees and their morale and.
We have some suggestions on that recommendation.
Communication, education.
It's like any business, right? I mean, it doesn't matter how many years you're really in business, it's what the business is for, right? The business is doing well and growing, then you can do the steps if not growing.
So we, we've benchmarked, we've talked about our study, and we just basically wanted to know where we were to our market peers. So that's what we've provided for you. And when we talk about all the benefits and things, that's what we're trying to do, to show you that total rewards, where we stack up against all the other benchmarked cities. At our interim city manager's direction, we did change the survey a tiny bit. We removed two of the top, was it Good Year and Flagstaff, and we added some lower peers to kind of have a little bit balanced range. So these are the current peers that we had marketed against, benchmarked against. This was a slide, and I don't know, you don't know if you can see it on your own slide, but this was just to show you what the ratio was of the personnel services cost. So it just basically says we're within the range. Kingman's at 71, almost 72%. You can see the other benchmark cities on the next two, or those two slides. I'm, I'm not the financial guru, but, but the finance department did gather that because HR people don't want to talk about those.
Well, and they didn't know. We asked, and HR people were like, what?
So I skip over that slide. The data is there. You can drop any questions. No, I'm just kidding. Really quick, the, all this data that we did benchmark, it came out that we were paying obviously less than the 50th percentile. We know that. We have not done those, we haven't done any scale adjustments. We haven't done any, anything like that. So we're paying around 30% of the 50th.
Base salary.
Yes, correct.
That's, that's the mid, that middle point is what we benchmark.
Yep.
So the police department is well below exempt employees.
And I do have a slide on the council position. We also surveyed that data. We'll have that after our.
So some of the questions that we asked our market peers is, what did you do for this current fiscal year for your employees, for the 17, 18 fiscal year? And I'll just kind of point you to our local folks. Bullhead City provided their employees a cost of living adjustment, and so they did, of two and a half percent. So that was the peanut butter approach that they provided all their employees. And they said this next year, they'll be doing a STEP increase for their employees. And I said, well, who, you know, they call it a merit. I said, well, what does merit mean to you? And it basically means if you meet expectation, you advance to the next step. Lake Havasu City did, used to differentiate and put some pay at risk. They did have a merit pay program prior to the recession tanking. And then they went, they're now funding their employee STEP program as we just described with Bullhead because their employees haven't had pay increases. Now they're doing the peanut butter approach. And so everybody who just advances to the next step. But last year, they did a cost of living adjustment at three and a half or 3.8%. This next year, they said they're going to be doing the STEP increase. And again, it'll be if you meet expectations, you'll advance to the next step. The community college, they do have a true merit program. So there's some funding at risk. On average, their employees received 2.4% this last year. No cost of living adjustments. And this next year, they're going to continue their merit pay program. So, you know, some employees will receive nothing and some employees will receive 3%. The county, the county, talking with them, they have been trying to do a little bit of what we've been doing the last couple of years, where they're trying to give their employees something because they have also not been funding pay increases. Last year, this fiscal year, I think we've all seen, HRF employees received a 15.8% increase. Public Works and Public Work Administrative employees received a 10% increase. And then they gave a lump sum of, I think, $500,000 to the Sheriff's Department and then said to Sheriff's Department, you know, spread it however you need to. And they did two to 25% increases to their staff. This next year, the county.
I'm sorry, did you just say arrange to 2% to 25%?
Yes.
For the Sheriff's?
Right.
Yeah, for the Sheriff's Department. And so next year, they're predicting to try to do a 5% for all the other employees who didn't receive any type of increases over the last year. We did, as we mentioned.
Jackie?
Yep.
Going back to that last slide briefly, the cost of living adjustments, those, the discrepancies from city to city, those are based just on what the city, those were across the board and based on what, just what the city could afford to give.
Yeah.
Not the difference in cost of living for each of those communities.
Correct, correct. So we did benchmark benefits, and I'll go through them since we're looking at the clock and we're getting close to 10 o'clock. The medical plan, basically, we match on employee, our employer share of its single employee premium. And then we lead for the employer share how much we pay toward family coverage. Health savings account, we match employer contributions. Dental and vision, we lead dental and vision. That's the next one. Group life benefits, it's kind of across the board of what people do with group life benefits. We lag on the flat dollar amount. And then the employers who provide X percent of salary, we might lead on the, anybody who has a salary of less than $40,000, but will lag on anybody who has a salary at more than $40,000. Number of holidays that we provide pretty much all matches the market. On paid leave, we lag the market on vacation and sick leave accruals. We lag the market on carryover for sick and vacation leave accruals. And we lag the market on how much we put, provide our fire, shift fire personnel on paid leave accruals. We lag the market on short and term, long-term disability policies. All of us have public state retirement systems that have long-term disability policies, not short-term. But it was interesting to find other employers out there that also provide extra benefit to their employees. So without us providing these benefits, we determined that we lag the market. Tuition assistance, we lead the, the market on the flat dollar amount we provide our employees. We provide, going to Councilmember Waite's question, we provide $4,500 per fiscal year. And the market average was $35.75 per fiscal year. I mean, it was all over the place on what people provided, as low as $2,000 up to 55, the taxable maximum. Shift differential, we lag in what we provide as shift differential, but we lead in what we provide in standby pay. We lag in the dollar value we provide our employees in bilingual pay. In terms of certification pay, this was interesting, it's all across the board. But we lead in the number of certification pays, and I say certification or skill-based pay, but we lag the market in terms of the, some of the amounts of certification pay where we do have a match in the market. So all in all, in summary, we had, in the benefits areas that we compared, we lead three of them. We lead or match one of them. We lead lag one of them. We match two of those, and we lag in five of those areas. So the current state of our compensation plan, as we've been discussing this morning, our stated philosophy of paying at the 50th percentile is not aligned with our marketing, market positioning, which is at the 30th, on average, the 30th percentile. So those two are in conflict. Employee actual pay, because we lag the market, is a disconnect with what employees expect, as we saw in the employee opinion survey. So we have a conflict there as well. And then we have the ability to fund compared to what our compensation structure or compensation statements, our compensation philosophy states. So again, we have another conflict there. Basically, our pay plan is broken. So some recommendations at looking at compensation options. Again, this is not a recommendation of what we're saying. We'll talk about that here in the next slide. These are just different compensation options. They, all of them have advantages and disadvantages, and there's a lot of information on this slide, and I won't go through them. Some, some of the advantages and disadvantages David touched on when we talked about, you know, base pay adjustments, the peanut butter approach and merit pay pool. There's disadvantages, advantages there. But all in all, there's different ways, and any combination of those to, to pay your employees is, is definitely acceptable options. Go ahead.
Well, you look at no change, and you mentioned the rising healthcare costs, the rising ASRS retirement costs increase, which is reducing take-home pay, but that's only a disadvantage that's listed for no change. Wouldn't that also affect under all of the other three categories as well? Employees would see a reduced take-home pay because of increased contributions.
They would, but that could be offset by a pay increase. So it could be a net zero. It could be maybe, you know, depends on what that, first of all, what the employee's plan is. Public safety retirement system, you know, their dollar amount that they contribute won't change. But state retirement system employees will see a net decrease. But it's ever so slight this next year. So if there was a pay increase of, say, 2%, that would offset.
Well, then also healthcare increases, right?
Yes, yeah.
But we choose to share with them.
Yeah, exactly. And it's hard to say when you do the plan design shifts, like you increase co-pays, how that would affect an individual. We all utilize our healthcare differently. But in terms of premium rate increases, yes. But again, that, that can be offset depending on what you do. And I know one year, long, long time ago, again, I've been here a couple of years now, that we did do a pay increase based on what the premium increase was going to be. So that was a net zero for employees. That was a long time ago.
All right. I updated this slide. I'm not sure if you're, what your slide says, but I did update it with more current data. I got a little bit more input. And I did show that the mayor's salary of $9,600 compared to the average at the 50th percentile of all the respondents, their average at the 50th percentile was $12,740. So we're, and then you can see the council is later. It was only five. So $6,000 was the salary for them. Some councils also pay vice mayor differently, some do not. So I did not provide that, that middle step for you all, but you can compare your competitors there. And Jackie was pulling together the benefits, whether or not, or the other benchmarkers provided health insurance. The results of that, that.
Make it available, but they don't pay for it.
The performance evaluation system, we talked about that at last year's compensation meeting. We have implemented or are beginning to implement the Track Start Performance Management System after we selected it. Keynotes are that it will be more efficient. It will allow these supervisors and managers input. Also, we will set goals for the employees. We will then have some data then to figure out if the merit system would be an option for us because right now we're using that paper system. You don't know what kind of employer or the bias is that could be in there. So we'll be doing more extensive training. We're going to be using a five-point scale rating system that's similar to what we've done in the past for other.
Will the payroll database be tied to this?
This is a standalone system, but our new RIS system will be linked in. So it's not, the payroll system is not. It's a standalone.
Yeah. So our next steps, working with the city manager, the next steps for fiscal 2018 and 19, it's recommended because our compensation plan, as we talked about today, it's just not working, is to not, not fund it this year, but rather do a one-time lump sum for employees who are meeting expectations and satisfactory performance. Together with the new city manager, hopefully we'll have on board the first part of May, that we start working on a compensation plan that is viable, that doesn't have the compensation philosophy conflict that we have now, replacing the compensation philosophy, developing pay administration guidelines, and looking for components where we can offer some type of merit increase or some kind of incentive for performance. We also, again, as Chris has stated, continue to develop our performance evaluation system because if we do move to a merit system, that needs to be honed in on. As we continue to use that over the next year, we'll be able to see some of those trends. We'll be able to see some of those high performers. We'll be able to see if there's a raider bias. Right now, with our paper system, we cannot, or the last year's, we have no idea what the trends look like. I mean, it's, it's their paper. There's a whole bunch of paper. There's four pages long. So it's, it's, it looks like this when we get the stack. So there's no way to review those trends. With the new online system, we're, we're able to be able to look at those trends. So to move to a different pay plan, to move to any type of, if we're looking at any type of merit pool system, we really need to fully have data in that performance evaluation system. And it's truly a transitional change.
Just one question on the recommendation. It says fund one-time lump sum to employees. What would it look like if you took that one-time lump sum and you allocated it towards the city's portion of care?
We, I have not.
Would that, would that result in maybe less of a, of a decrease in take-home pay for the staff?
Yeah, we can look at that.
We have a, excuse me, Councilmember Leon Felder, members of council, the staff hasn't really fleshed out what that one-time lump sum looks like. You remember, there's an earlier slide where in 2013, there was a plan, a one-time plan, and it was based on years of service, and that was it. There are other ways to do one-time plans, but we're, the, the central point in this slide is that staff recommendation will be for one-time pay.
And you'll come back to us with those numbers?
We'll come back with the details of, of what that looks like. And that, so the idea of incorporating some of the non-base salary benefits into how we do that math is, is an idea we will staff out. I just, one other thing that I, I just wanted to kind of leave for those of you who will be here next year to think about, is that, and I thought the staff did a really good job today explaining this central point, is that any pay plan that's based on a matrix, excuse me, is going to move horizontally and kind of on a northeast vector, I call it. So your, your costs go up two ways, horizontally and as the market changes. And staff will try to present to you what that looks like on a newly designed pay plan. But I can tell you, when you apply that to the current plan, it's, it's just really, really difficult to imagine how we can honor both ideas that are in that plan, which is moving employees through it and moving the midpoint with market. It, it gets to be a pretty significant number. And so that became the foundational basis for why the staff is recommending a one-time. And I can tell you from personal experience, when you're either in a no-change model or a one-time model, it's the best time to get your performance plan in shape because the employees are engaged in that without any compensation change on the table. So you want, my. So you, my experience, the organization will wind up with a better pay or a performance plan than they would otherwise have. And then that gives you leg up, if you will, when you try to add money to it, salary. So I appreciate all the work that staff did putting today's presentation together.
I do have one question, if we're moving on, sorry.
I'm just, I was just going to turn to questions and say right there, Councilman.
All right, keep going.
No, I said-
Oh, okay. Well, this was just with respect to the lump sum that was recommended. I noticed that one of the disadvantages was creating the potential for pay inequity with new hires. And I can understand how, you know, an individual, let's, just as an example, let's say it's a, a police officer who's training a new guy, they're both getting paid the same. And perhaps this, this question has already been answered in terms I'm not familiar with. But I was wondering if, if we were to go forward with, you know, a lump sum, if there would be a way to maybe, would the lump sum have to be the same for each employee or could it be staggering depending on years of service or something?
Yeah, so let me do half and have HR team do the other half. The answer is absolutely could be separated based on years of service so that there's a different amount. And that's exactly what the city did in 2013.
Okay.
The second, and defer to HR to answer this in more detail, but the point you just made is what they live with all the time now with the current pay plan, which is trying to figure out how to bring in somebody in an equitable way to the folks who are already here. And so consequence of this recommendation is that it perpetuates the environment they have for another fiscal year and, in my perspective, motivates them to make sure that there's a good pay plan in its place so that they don't have to have those kinds of decisions going forward.
Yeah, so exactly, that's what, exactly what that means is that, you know, if we're not, if we're giving a lump sum, we're not progressing employees through the range. So we continue the same complexity that we have today. And I'm not sure if this is where you're going, but there is the possibility of doing different things with what we're going to be recommending to alleviate this next year and of course, you know, in the future, hopefully we'll have something that's a little more viable.
Yeah. Personally, I'd like to see- I can, I can imagine that, like, an officer, all getting paid seven years. I, that could be disappointing.
Yes.
Just quickly, two numbers I was kind of hoping to see. So as we move forward, we see if this new pay structure is successful. I didn't see any numbers today that really talked about turnover, which deals with retention, and then the unfilled positions, which is obviously about recruitment. So maybe if we have a benchmark where we're starting at, then we can look down the road and see if we are addressing those issues.
I did prepare turnover rates and we're at about just under 11% for a five-year average. It has-
Yeah, and we do break those out by the different segments.
Oh, thank you. Great.
Yeah, by each department. And then also the-
Thank you.
The lump sum amount, is that as much as a step would be or?
We haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten there yet, so we don't know if they could step up. My other question was, is could each department, as part of the budget process, submit some numbers, maybe looking at any at-risk employees they have and how much it would take to move those employees so that they're in a better position, so that we're looking at high-performing employees that maybe are at risk of losing them because the pay is off? And then that way, each department head could sort of address their own departments and we could look at that.
So that's actually part of the current system. That's what I was saying, because during the budget process, department directors, saw the slides about the different pay grades. Department directors have the ability to sit at the budget submission time and identify positions that they want to move through the current system. Those aren't the dollars we're talking about in this recommendation. We're talking about how to, we will move the whole system. And there, I haven't counted how many of those there are every year, but it's a relatively small number.
But do you think that we're doing a good job of identifying?
I think we're-
Making those adjustments?
I think we're in need of changing the pay plan, so.
Okay.
Just along those lines, do department heads and managers rank their employees in terms of performance? Like, this is my top performer and this is my bottom one. It's painful to do, but it's a fact.
The skillset of the managers vary on that. We, with the online system, we will be able to do that ranking. And again, we'll be looking for raider bias. So if everybody gets, you know, exceeds, we know something, something isn't right there. So, but right now, we don't have that ranking system on the paper.
Well, I actually mean by employee that this is my top performing employee and that is John Doe. And this is my-
So I-
Bottom ranking.
Yeah. So Councilmember Chris, I, what I would say that Jackie just said in a different way is that it's our intention to be able to do that with the system outlined in today's presentation, but that currently that doesn't happen.
Currently, I would say it's informal. It's not a formal process at this point.
Just one more question on the one-time lump sum. Just conceptually, I know you guys are still working through that. That's not going to move anybody through the pay. It's just going to be like an extra check?
Yep.
Is that right?
Correct.
But we can look at differentiations as we talked about here, but yeah.
My concern is, while it's, it's demoralizing to not receive a pay raise, but I think it's even more demoralizing to work somewhere for a while and then see a decrease in take-home pay because of increases in healthcare insurance costs and ARS contributions. So that's kind of why I asked the question, is there a way for the city to pick up some of those costs? So our employees that have been here a while, well, we may not be able to afford to give them a raise, see a huge decrease in take-home pay.
I appreciate that. And I want to come back to Councilmember Staley's. Haven't changed what I said two minutes ago, but we haven't got that figured out yet. But if I were thinking about size of it, it'd look more like what you might think of as a cost of living increase rather than a step.
Any other questions? Thank you for that excellent presentation. Very informative.
Thank you.
So we can move on to item two. Executive session regarding city manager recruitment pursuant to ARS 3843103A1. The city attorney requests that the council go into executive session to discuss city manager recruitment. Council may take action to name the semifinalists for the city manager position and provide direction regarding the next steps in the city manager recruitment process. Entertain a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Obviously, you guys can stay here if you want to do it, you can just pick out the folks you don't want.
Are we on though? That's harsh.
Meaning the press?
Yes. Well, I didn't, are we?